Ladies and gentlemen, we're here at, it's on July the 5th, 2017, here at 6:00 PM, City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas, in the Granbury City Council. Regular meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon our favorite J.C. Campbell to lead us in our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by Councilman Tony Allen. All rise please.
Very well with me. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for each and every day that you give us here on earth. We ask that you help us so we can do things that were pleasing to you and that is good for our fellow citizens. We ask that you also be with our military, Heavenly Father. This past Saturday, we had a memorial dedication where we dedicated a memorial park to veterans, to law enforcement, and to the firemen who served and give up their lives at times, but they serve the public, and we thank you for them. It was a beautiful day when we first got, when we got it started, but things worked out. And we thank you for that day. We ask that these things, we ask all of these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me as American Constitution. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the V, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Well, it's my honor tonight to go ahead and kick this meeting off with a very special presentation. We have a presentation that is an award from the TMAI, which is the Texas Municipal Information Officers Association. This special one-time program received from the Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers for the video of the Granbury PD officer saves children's lives, saved child's life. And this was produced by Bethany Kyle, our Public Information Officer. Bethany, if you would, come forward please. This video of the Granbury PD officer saves life, child's life, received a TAMI Award for video special of one-time program from the Texas Association of Municipal Information Officers. The video was produced by Public Information Officer Bethany Kyle using Granbury Police Department vehicles' dash cam for footage. The video showcases the heroic actions of the Granbury Police Department's Officer Chase Miller using CPR to save a three-year-old boy's life on October 12th, 2016. The video shows Officer Miller arriving on the scene with one minute from the 911 call from a father whose son was not breathing. When he arrived, the boy was unresponsive. Officer Miller performed CPR until the boy was able to breathe again. At the October 18th, 2016 meeting, the City Council presented the lifesaving award to Officer Miller. The video was seen countless times through various media outlets across the state, the country, and the world. The post of the video was shared by Good Morning America on Facebook, has been viewed 37 million times. Really. That TAMI Award Program is the leading recognition program in the Texas honoring excellence for municipal communication strategies. The TMIO is an affiliated, affiliation of the Texas Municipal League, which represents about 98% of Texas urban population through its more than 1,000 members of the cities and towns. The TAMI Award Program founded in 2001 serves as a professional high point of municipal communications work in Texas, and our own Bethany Kyle has received this. So it is my honor to present this to her. This is the time that the City Council provides an opportunity for citizens to present concerns and address issues that are not matters of consideration listed on the posted meeting agenda during the citizens' participation period at the City Council meeting per month. It's subject to the following rules. A person wishing to address the City Council must first register with the City Secretary and provide the following information: their name, resident address, daytime telephone number, and the subject matter to present it. Only one person may be approached to the microphone at the time, and the speaker must address their comments to the presiding officer rather than the individual City Council members. And the speakers may file a copy of their remarks for supporting information with the City Secretary, who will make that information available to the City Council and the City Manager if requested. The City Council will be allowed to review input of the information for future agenda items, but will not be allowed to enter into discussion. The Council shall allow approximately 30 minutes for the citizens' participation during the designated Council meeting. And the reason I read that so lengthy article there is because we have a person here, I don't think's been up here before, so I want to make sure that they understood those rules. Our first one is Kevin Myers.
Kevin Myers, 3521 Brushy Road. On behalf of the Granbury TV Advisory Board, of which I am a member, we are certainly proud of all the work that Bethany Kyle is doing. This video, just one outlet, 37 million. The cumulative and multiplier effect of that probably was somewhere close to 100, maybe 200 million views. And one of the things that I think is very significant, as I was watching this whole thing unfold, was the comments that I saw in the video. One, was about how positive this video was and how it made people feel good about police support and efforts in the communities. And two, was the pride of people that live in Granbury, all over the country, saying, "That's my town," and how proud I am to be a part of Granbury, even if they don't live here. So both of those things were very effective communication tools, and are just really one example of the work that Bethany does for us. I think it's important to note the timeliness of the work that she did on this video and all the things that she does for us. The meeting was on Tuesday night, I believe, and the video was up one or two days later, taking advantage of the timeliness of that. The Fourth of July Parade yesterday is up and ready for people to view today. The timeliness. Your City Council meeting will be posted, and if you're not watching it live already, will be posted and ready to be watched tonight, as soon as you get finished. The timeliness of the work, which to us as a TV board was one of the things that we really, really struggled with for a long, long time, and we don't have to struggle with that anymore. It lets us move on to the next thing, which is creating new content that highlights the great things that are going on in Granbury that you guys are funding, and we certainly appreciate that, and we appreciate the work that Bethany is doing. So thank you guys for selecting her, giving her to us, and certainly look forward to everything that's coming in the future.
Kevin? Very well said. Our next speaker is Carrie Basinger, is that right?
Hello, my name is Carrie Basinger. I'm from, I have a property I own on 800 Panama Court. It's an apartment community. I've owned it for, say, three and a half, four years, something along those lines. And yesterday was the Fourth of July. I don't live at the property, but I had security at the property, and I actually went to the property to watch the fireworks on yesterday. And while I was there, I was really shocked at, or enlightened at some of the things that I saw in the area. We're in the city, and across the street is in the county. So while I was there, you know, I'm pretty easygoing with music and running dogs running loose, things like that, but we have a lot of older people who live at the community, and the subdivision across the street, I'd always heard it was county, but I guess it really didn't set into what that meant to me, or the impact that that would have. So when I found out that that was county, I did some research on it. People shot fireworks in that subdivision, and those homes are six, seven, eight feet apart at best. They're very, very close for a subdivision. You could almost reach out and borrow somebody's sugar. The people shot fireworks out to the wee hours, and this is the type of thing that came onto the property, our property, on fire. These big firework things, like professionals would use, and we're not talking little bobcats and sparklers. So I was really shocked that people were so inconsiderate living in the homes. They know they're not in the county. They know that, and I think that they purchased homes knowing they're not in the county because they're not wanting to follow the city rules and regulations. I think that that brings a different type of population to the area. Granbury is such a beautiful, vibrant town. I love Granbury. I would also love people to respect it as much as I respect it. And the fact that people are shooting fireworks in the middle of the night is extremely disrespectful. When I learned about 35 feet from the property, what rules that they have, they could shoot target practice, I found out, in their front yard, not opposed to gun rights by any means, but they can do target practice in the middle of their yard, and nothing can be done about it. In the county, they only have one law, and that's a leash law, and that's it, I learned today. So, I mean, target practice, they can play music at any hour of the night, that does not attract the type of tenant that you want, because our tenants were very unhappy with the noise that the people were making across the street and in that immediate area. I realize that annexation is a tough obstacle that a lot of folks in that neighborhood would not, you know, often, they're not going to want a voluntary annexation, but I think to do it, an involuntary annexation, for the safety and for the city to grow and improve the resident and the profile of the people for the town. Thank you.
Next, we will move into the consent agenda. Those items are, the first item is to consider approving the City Council meeting minutes of June 20th, 2017, budget workshop, and the June 20th, 2017, regular meeting. Council, you have an opportunity to look at these items. Are there any discussion or any questions, or do you want to remove that from the consent agenda to talk about it? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion, Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second, by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Consent agenda is approved. We will next move into our deliberation agenda. The item we have here is to discuss and consider retaining a qualified, certified public accounting firm to, A, review and evaluate existing policies, procedures, and internal controls for the city's payroll department, and, B, present and recommend changes and improvements in such policies, procedures, and internal controls of the city's payroll department. This item was presented to the Council by Councilman Mel Protem, Mickey Parsons. So, Mr. Parsons, I'm gonna let you open this up, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. In our, looking at payroll issues over the last four or five months, begin to see some items that begin to make me wonder if we didn't need to have a public accounting firm look at our payroll authorization procedures and come up with maybe some ideas on how to strengthen internal controls in that department. At a recent Council meeting, the Council approved a motion that I made to implement a policy, an internal control policy, that any raise given to Council employees, which are considered the city manager, the city attorney, the city secretary, and the municipal judge, that that would require a copy of the minutes that approved that, or authorized that pay be a part of the records of the payroll department. It's come to my attention recently that the one raise that was given did not have any paperwork or internal controls with that. I think the city secretary was given a raise earlier in the year, and that, there's apparently no paperwork or any records that talk or address that issue. That's a little scary to think that a payroll clerk may or may not have to have in her file something that provides evidence that that was an appropriate one. So I'm proposing that we ask the city manager to discuss with our existing external auditor to maybe evaluate the payroll department and the internal controls there on more of a special basis, on a one-time basis. We've always gotten a clean opinion in the past with internal controls, but based on what's been going on, I'd like to see the city manager talk to them potentially about adding that as a part of their internal audit, or their audit this year, and vis a vis that, maybe if that doesn't work with them, that we would contact or contract with some other certified public accounting firm to come in and make an individual audit of the internal controls of the payroll department.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Council, any discussion, concerns on this item? Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'd ask for open records on this item that Mr. Parsons is talking about, and there was no paper trail. What I was told, if I'm wrong here, city manager correct me on the raise. Is that correct?
There is no paper trail on this one, and many others for the secretary in the past.
Okay, so you're saying in the past, before you got here?
Yes, sir.
Is, okay, who told, whoever writes the check, who told them to raise it?
Well, as y'all thoroughly discussed, the mayor instructed the HR director to issue that pay raise.
And HR told him to give the raise.
And he did it, yeah.
Okay. That's what we're trying to prevent.
Right, and I've already-
And I agree with what the mayor's saying and you're saying.
We've already implemented the rule that you passed at the last meeting. We've already added that to the personnel policy, and be happy to get y'all, the auditor, to look at that department real close. We do that anyway. You know, when I came, I reviewed all the internal controls in the finance department as part of what I do, and, you know, it's pretty, it's pretty clear that there's good policies that are being carried out in there. As far as internal control, we've got a HR director and an administrative assistant that do the work of the payroll. We use ADP, which is a package software that requires all kinds of documentation, and so, and this, the only weak link really is this one where the council deals with their employees. There's not really, there is now, something written-
Well, you've implemented that policy.
Yes, sir.
Right.
So, but still, we'll, we'll look at-
Perhaps we ought to have someone look at that and see if that's adequate for-
Yeah, all the documentation for the other employees is in place. You know, when we do our annual merit raises, there's a spreadsheet from each department that's processed through the ADP, and it's kept his records. So, you know, overall, I think we're pretty good shape, but it never hurts to get somebody to review what you've been doing, and if there's ways to improve it, we certainly implement some new ideas.
So do you think you might have a report back for us by the next Council meeting?
We can, we can see what the auditor will offer for us. Sure do.
We don't need to put this on the motion.
I think, I think you should. I mean, it's an agenda item to discuss and consider taking action, so I'd encourage you to take it, take action and instruct me to do something.
And what I'm, and what I'm hearing from the city manager too, is basically that you could control this and make this roll-in basically similar to anybody else's pay that they get, you know? I mean, it sounds like there's just this, this window, the employees that are actually fall underneath the council are not getting the same, I guess, people looking at it, or the same way of doing business as all the other employees, and I think if we, if they fall in that same category, then there's going to be those measures, there's going to be those things that are going to throw up a red flag at home. By the way, this, the procedure is not, the process is not completed yet to give this person a raise, or anything else involving their salaries. So, I mean, I think, I think that's what I'm hearing, right?
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we authorize and direct the city manager to examine and explore the possibility of retaining a qualified, certified public accounting firm to review and evaluate the existing policies, procedures, and internal controls of the city's payroll department, and that that public accounting firm would present and recommend changes and improvements in such policies, procedures, and internal controls of the city's payroll department.
Okay, Council, we've got a motion, I won't reread that, but we've got a motion by Councilman Parsons.
Second.
And we have a second by Councilman Couch. Council, any more discussion on this item? I think he's pretty much covered everything in that, and hopefully we can hear back from the city manager on that real quick. Did you have a date on that?
I didn't mention a date, but, well, I'd mentioned a date in discussion, possibly by the next-
Okay.
Well, the auditors will be here, what, October the 1st, or I don't know if they show up on that soon, but if we're gonna have them doing it, I think it would be a part of their regular auditing procedures.
I see Ava out there stretching her neck.
We'll see if we can get them here before then to address this situation.
Very good. Any more discussion, Council? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Look forward to those results. At this time now, the City Council will recess its regular Council meeting, and we will convene into a meeting for the Employee Benefit Trust. I'm gonna go ahead and call upon, I'll go ahead and open the meeting. I will now open the City of Granbury Employee Benefits Trust meeting. I'd like to call upon Steve Roberts to address this, if you would, please.
Mr. Mayor, Council, city manager, thank you. First of all, I want to introduce Michael Parks. Michael is worth, I brought backup tonight. Michael is with Higgins Botham and Associates. He has been our broker since I've been here, and has done an excellent job for us, as he has this year. And if I get any tough questions, I'm gonna defer to Michael. As you know, we're with Blue Cross Blue Shield currently, and renewal came up. We renew August 1st, if you're not aware of that, which is only a few weeks away. Blue Cross Blue Shield came back with an initial quote of 37.1% increase in premiums, which would have been, gosh, I don't know, I haven't even done the math on that. It's about $11,000 a point, so it would, it would have been a significant amount of money. They eventually revised their renewal down to 23%, but to make a long story short, we did go out for bid based on those numbers. You should have had a handout in front of you. The first two columns are the Blue Cross Blue Shield numbers. The first column is the current, and the second column is their alternative proposal. We had three, three bids. Aetna, United Healthcare, actually, we had four. TML actually came in at 40%, just so you're aware of that, 40% increase. And anyway, we narrowed it down based on the numbers to, really, United Healthcare. They were the most competitive. And the first column, or the third column from your left, is the first United Healthcare proposal, and you can see those numbers there. The proposal that we're recommending tonight is the fourth column on your right, without out-of-network benefits, which are seldom used, and when they are used, it's my understanding that it's usually an accident, that someone ends up in an out-of-network situation. Michael has indicated to us that they've been able to act as an advocate for those folks who may make a mistake, and in the event of emergency as well, out-of-network, if it's a true emergency, out-of-network kicks in, once, until the emergency is resolved. To make a long story short, what we've done is we bumped up the deductible from 2,500 to 3,500, and as you may recall, the city is, through an HRA, Health Reimbursement Account Arrangement, has been paying the difference between $1,000 up to 2,500 for the employee. We only had eight employees meet their deductible last year in the whole city, so very few did. So that was, that was a good risk to take, saved us lots of money. If you remember back, three or four years ago, our premiums were up around $1,000 a month per employee. What we're proposing this time is we increase that 2,500 to 3,500 and fund it through the health reimbursement, the HRA, up to the 3,500 between $1,000 and $3,500, which would be 2,500, and with, if we had 10 employees, that would cost the city, what, $25,000? By going with the out-of-network option, we save 7.53%. Now, that's a savings, that's not an increase. Remember, our initial proposal was a 37% increase. So that's a savings of hundreds of thousands of dollars. The other thing that changes with the, the red numbers are negative, the green numbers are positive. The two numbers that concerned us, that concerned staff, was the $40 copay, and also the $100 emergency room payment. So what we propose that we do is we take $100 and put $100 in every employee's flexible spending account that they can use to compensate for that increase in the copays. So if they only go to the doctor a couple of times a year, it'll be fine. If they go more than that, they still may experience a little bit of an increase in their out-of-pocket, but all of their out-of-pocket, and their deductibles are limited anyway. So by doing this, I don't know, Chris, did you run the numbers on how much we're gonna save if we do the 7.53%, but that's the option that we're proposing. So I've probably forgotten something. One other thing, I know one other thing I forgot, was all of the optional employee-paid benefits, we've decided to leave those unchanged, so there's no change in any of those benefits. That's not something the city pays for anyway, so that's, the employees pay for that insurance. We're gonna leave that alone this year. We had some price guarantees in there from a few, a couple of years ago. Any questions or comments?
Steve, does this, does this insurance have a mandatory physical for the employees every year?
It's not mandatory, but if you look down in the language down at the bottom, there is an incentive, and this doesn't cost the city or the employee any more than what's already on this piece of paper. If the employee will, will submit to biometric screenings or a health survey, they are eligible for gift cards, anywhere from $20 to, what is it, Mike, Michael, $100, $75? Or there's three separate, there's three separate ones, there are gift cards that they can receive by participating in that program. And again, that's no cost to the city. As well, we'll have a health fair again in October, and at the health fair, the employees will be able to get those biometric screenings done. The other thing that we're proposing that is, Michael's here, we, not this year, but next renewal, we want to require employees to take a biometric screening. Actually, I probably worded that wrong. We can't require them, but if they do it, they're, the city will continue to pay 100% of their premiums. If they don't do it, they don't do that screening, then they're gonna have to pick up 30% of their premiums. So that's also a proposal we'd like to make. They have a year's grace period to get those biometric screenings done. Won't cost anything, they can go to their doctor, it'll be paid 100%, or they can come to the health fair and get it done. So that's where we're at on that.
They do have alternatives to where they can, I mean, I just don't want to scare people away from going and signing up to get a physical or do the things that they need to do, because they're gonna, they're gonna pay a $40, $40, or they're not gonna pay, you're just kicking your head, no.
Physical's free.
Physical's free, okay.
Anything that's preventative is covered 100%.
Okay.
That's federal law currently.
Okay.
Mayor?
Councilman Couch?
Steve, I want to give you a scenario, and you tell me how this would be paid. Let's say we have an employee, and they're in Colorado, they're skiing, and they break a leg. a leg, and there's no network there. So what is going to be the burden on the employee?
Well, I believe that would be considered an emergency, and it would be paid for under the normal terms of the, of the policy. Once the emergency is over, the leg is set or whatever, and they've been given a prescription or whatever, and they go home, then if they go back for some reason, then it would be out of network unless it was an additional emergency. But, but if it's an emergency, and I think breaking a leg is, I know our definition of what's an emergency and what isn't could vary, but-
So, the employee would not be out anything?
Well, they could still be out their deductible or their copays.
Well, nothing beyond what the-
Yeah, that's correct.
What in-network would be?
That's correct.
Okay. Let's say they got food poisoning.
They say what?
Let's say they had food poisoning in a restaurant.
I think that's probably an emergency as well.
Okay. All right, I'm good, thank you.
I would like to add that we put together a small committee, and we reviewed these options, and we all agreed with those caveats of increasing the, the HRA to those new limits. Basically, the employee doesn't get a change in benefits, and they, they really allow us to save some more money for the city. So the benefits basically remain the same because of these reimbursements that we're doing, and we're able to take a little of that money and put it back into the HRA.
I personally have United Healthcare, they're a great company.
They're huge.
Yeah.
One of them made five.
What typically, Michael, explain this to me, what typically happens with out-of-network if people go there by mistake. For example, you may be having some outpatient surgery, and afterwards you find out the anesthesiologist was not in-network. Those are the kind of things that are more common than the emergency situation. But even when those events occur, Higginbotham, Michael will go to bat for the employee and to try to get the United Healthcare to work with the employee and with us on reducing those costs, if there are any.
Counsel, any more questions for Steve on this item?
Maybe.
Councilman?
You're talking about saving 7%. What, what is that total figure you're talking about saving?
Saving $90,000.
About $90,000 a year. Great. Didn't hear me gripe, did you?
No.
Not yet.
I'd be surprised if you did.
Oh, there, thank you, thank you.
But if you want to gripe, I'll bring Michael up there, you can gripe at him.
Thank you, Steve. Well, counsel, as you know, and this agenda item is consider approving the City of Granbury's Employee Health Insurance Benefits Renewal. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
No move.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley for approval, and I have a second by Councilperson Meyer. Counsel, any further discussion on this item?
Good job.
Councilperson Meyer?
I just said, "Good job."
If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you. That's the last item on the Granbury Employees Benefit Trust meeting. No more discussion, counsel? That item is adjourned. We will now move into our executive session. That being, I now declare that the City of Granbury Council is convened into open session, that all our members are present. The city council will now go into our closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in these following sections, Section 1151, 551, I'm sorry, .087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, and Section 551.074, personnel matters or city attorney contracts. We will now go into executive session. Okay, the council is reconvened into open session. There was no action taken in the executive session. Counsel, is there any more discussion? If, any more discussion, counsel?
No, I'll just put it on the agenda for next meeting.
If there's no more discussion, the council meeting is adjourned.